Let Eric in.
Okay.
And I am going to record the meeting, one second. Okay, we're now recording.
Thank you. Hi all, welcome to the April 29 Zoom meeting of the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District. I just, before we get started, I'm calling the meeting to order, I would like to just take a second, because I will forget by the end of this evening, to thank our administration, building principals, assistant principals, the staff, professional staff, support staff, all of the people who have been involved in the last two months as we've transitioned to remote learning and we're supporting our students as best we can. And you have all impressed me with your work, impressed all of us. So I wanted to take a minute to start our meeting congratulating all of you on an amazing accomplishment in unprecedented times filled with disappointment and frustration. And I think we're doing a pretty great job as a district, so.
I agree, I wanna, yes, I wanna piggyback on that because the decisions you guys have to make every single day off the cuff with things that we've never dealt with. And you all have to do it as a group and together and do what's best. And certainly, it doesn't make everybody happy all the time. But the fact that you've had to truly be independently making choices and decisions. And it's just been really difficult and you guys have done an amazing job. And thank you for having a third meeting tonight. I know you guys are exhausted, so, thank you.
Okay, I have to try and get my dog out of the room. So, do we have any agenda adjustments at this point, Andy?
Yeah, I just wanted to, under the principal's report, just add Brian, because I had omitted him in his athletic report and his update on the bleachers.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, alright, so we'll add Brian to the principal's report. Great, alright, and at this point, we need to, basically, all of the board members, at this point, we need to explain why we are participating via Zoom. Each member of the boards asked to state for the record where you are, why your attendance person is not reasonably practical, and if anyone is with them, and whether or not you're able to hear proceedings. So, we got an outline, I think it's pretty simple. If we could just go around the room quickly, or the Zoom room. Tom, are you here?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I am at home. I am here because of COVID-19. I can hear the proceedings, there is no one in the room with me.
Great, thank you, and Kate is next on my list.
Kate Stoll, I am here, I am participating from home due to COVID. I am the only person in the room and I can hear everything.
Great. Liz, you're next.
I am home during COVID, I'm the only one in the room and I can hear the proceedings.
Cindy?
I am home due to COVID, I am alone and I can hear the meeting.
Krista?
I am home due to COVID and I'm by myself and I can hear everything.
Beth?
I'm Beth Williams, I'm home as well due to COVID. I am alone in the room in my home and I can hear everything.
Great, and I'm Holly, I'm here alone in the room because of COVID and I can hear everything as well. Okay, at this point, I'd like to open the floor to public input. Is there any, Bob, are you seeing any public input?
As of right now, there is no public input.
Great, okay, so that, we'll move on from that. We now have nominations, resignations, and correspondence. Andy?
I just wanted to let you know that we continue to work with the bus company, which is later on in the agenda. I received a correspondence spreadsheet from them today that we follow onto legal counsel as we look at, what I'll call our contractual obligations regarding the bus company. And I'll further highlight those when we get into discussions. But I just wanted to make you aware that I had sent a correspondence along to Jim, which was a financial spreadsheet from STA. And we are participating in a conference call on Monday to iron that out. We'll come back the middle of this month with some concrete answers.
Is that it, no nominations or anything like that?
No, because we don't have the budget yet, so we probably won't have those until further along.
That's true, okay. So, at this point, I would like to open the floor for principals' reports. I'm gonna let Tim, would you just go first since your report was the first thing in the agenda?
Sure, thank you, Holly. First, I would like to highlight the work my teachers have done since the outset of this. Most recently, I think, I think the biggest thing that sticks out to me that I highlighted in here is the use of the team dynamic in the middle school. The work that our teachers are doing collaboratively, not only to identify those struggling learners and then the interventions, the steps necessary to help them be more successful, incorporating school counseling into these meetings on a regular basis. Our specialist teachers taking part in these. And really just identifying steps that we can all take to help more people, more students, be more successful in this new environment. I think, you know, overall, the staff has done just a tremendous job since the beginning and the outset of this. Most recently, we have a, with the extension of remote learning to the end of the school year, we've obviously all identified the missing social emotional, social emotional connection that school provides for everyone. And just in the last couple of weeks, our teachers have been asked to reach out to their rocks. And I just was in a CPT the other day and I was hearing some feedback on just the value that that provides for students in somewhat of an non-academic setting in this environment, allowing for students to socialize with their trusted adult in the building, as well as their peers, has really been a nice addition to our new norm. I also want to highlight the work that our custodians have done. If you didn't see, the roll. It has all been trimmed out by our maintenance staff since its installation. And it really does look, it looks phenomenal. So there's a little picture in there, you can't, doesn't really do it justice, but the work that the custodial staff has done, not just in the shared space, the tech ed room, and the robotics space, but throughout the building. We've had classrooms painted, hallways painted, NPR has been painted. We've had, you know, the typical work that gets done during vacations and whatnot, you know, all over the place, be it air filter changing. Just today, you know, Jerry was up on the roof and identifying leaks that we have had probably for quite some time and patching those. And the maintenance staff has just done a really tremendous job. I don't know if our building's ever, ever looked this good. So hats off to the maintenance staff as well. Obviously, I'd be open to questions on anything in the, in the principal's report. I do have, you know, some student accomplishments that have gone on in recent weeks in there as well. So if anyone has any questions or comments on the report, I'd be happy to answer those.
Anyone?
Hi Holly, I just wanted to say thank you to especially the staff. Although the middle school's the one age level I don't have remote learners in right now, I have been really following along and changed and kind of doing the week grants and all the adjustments and making the adjustments as they go to better, you know, suit all the students' needs, I think has been really, really well received. And I can understand why, I know, you know, I've had to request that too for some of my kiddos, just as a full-time working parent and to be able to kind of see, students need to be able to see the zoomed-out view and parents do too to be able to support it. And I know that wasn't easy to kind of change directions, it's kind of been a constant thing. So just wanted to say thank you to all the staff. And like you said, the custodial staff, both, you know, reading the report for high school and middle school has been amazing, so.
Great, yeah, Tim, I mean, just send along our thanks and gratitude to your staff and all of those that are working so hard.
Absolutely, we'll do.
Thanks. Great report, thank you.
Thank you.
Rick, I think that's you now.
Yep, so I apologize in advance, some of mine's gonna sound very similar to Tim's, but I do want to thank the board and as I mentioned in my report, the central office, for allowing us to be as flexible as we can. I'm in touch with colleagues throughout the state and the fact that we are entrusted with the ability to make decisions on the fly and react quickly. I can't explain, you know, it's hard to put into words how much, what an advantage that gave our kids. Because we didn't have to wait for another emergency board meeting to make a decision. We could make a decision when we needed to. While they haven't always been perfect, I do, my hats off, are also off to the teachers, the staff, support staff, custodians. As Tim mentioned, the amount of work that's going on, it has been unbelievable. Again, I want to congratulate the students for their effort. And because I'm in touch with principals throughout the state on a regular weekly basis, I can feel, I feel very confident that our kids are working harder than most, actually. So I'm really impressed with their effort and their commitment to their schoolwork in what is pretty difficult times, obviously. There are, you know, one of the big questions for us, we've been working with is what is direct instruction? So that comes in a variety of forms, obviously, as you know, at home. And those kids at home are all experiencing that. I'm really pleased with our staff adopting a variety of technologies. Zoom is certainly one of them, but they're looking at things like flip grid and padlet and just a lot of different technologies. And for some, it's way out of their comfort zone, but they're eager and have embraced those technologies. And I've seen examples, multiple examples where kids have been participating in those. Even the simple email connections that teachers are making with kids, just real quick checking in has gone extraordinarily, extraordinarily well. Also, really, the, I mentioned the high school, we're really excited about the painting. That's obvious, it's been a big budget item, it's been there year over year that tends to get omitted or removed. But the fact that we're painting some areas of our building for the first time since it's opened is a pretty big deal, the gym being one of them. So it will be nice to have a fresh coat of paint on there. And I also want to, you know, support staff who are in, especially working with our students, IEPs and their custodians too, for their bravery to coming in. Not everybody's willing to come into the building. And our format we have set up is conducive to that and lets people, allows people, students and staff to feel safe. And, you know, people are showing up every day and doing the job that's expected of them and doing it really, really well. And so I've been very pleased with that. I got to sit in with a Zoom session with one young lady on IEP with her para and running through business, what I'll call business as usual. And the student had to work up to it, it took them a little while to get to the point to be able to do that work. But to think about students who would struggle with change and seeing them adapt to the new format has been beyond impressive, so just a great job by those folks. Athletics has been leading the charge in a lot of ways with some winter sports awards, for starters. I think Brian's turned into a film producer of sorts. He's produced the NHIA Scholar Athletes Awards, which I thought was a great, great thing. The HB Open, the contest that's now district-wide, again, just finding ways to connect as staff and with kids, kids in any way possible, even if it's a small token effort. I look forward to, I'm sure there'll be tons of HB Open t-shirts out there. I hope we have to like, you know, find more money in the budget for them. There will be so many kids to participate, but there are some really, really great things going on. And as you know, there's lots of discussion about prom and graduation, which some of you have been involved. So I think we've made great progress there and our student leadership has shown a lot of leadership in their approach to handling these things in a really pragmatic fashion, tempering their disappointment, which is not easy to do. It's very, it's a very emotional time, as you know. And business is continuing as usual, we're right on target with our master schedule for next year. Ready to move forward with that and those numbers thus far look, look like they're meeting expectations that we've set together as a school board and an administration. So we're happy, we're happy with those things. I do want to turn it over to Brian briefly, and I'm also happy to answer any questions if I need to my report, I do want to give Brian a moment to speak about the bleachers.
Okay, we can have Brian?
Thanks Holly, so, one of the things that we've been working on, you know, through the athletics department is getting our proposals for bleachers done. Because obviously, that's one of the missing components right now with the turf field project. So I believe Holly did send out to all the board members today the three proposals that I've put together at this point. Two of those proposals were for brand-new, a brand-new shiny set of bleachers with a built-in press box. And the other proposal was actually for a used set of stands through a company called Bleacher Builders out of Florida. And I've actually spent a lot of time talking with the gentleman from Bleacher Builders just about their process and how things work. I mean, I don't know if we want to get into too much detail tonight. I think we were gonna probably present at the May meeting. So, you know, obviously, you guys have the proposals that you can certainly look through. And just to give you some reference, we're looking for a set of bleachers that's gonna fit approximately 1,000 spectators that are elevated, ADA accessible, and do have a built-in press box. So that was kind of the standard that we went with when seeking out these proposals. So at this point, I mean, I'm happy to answer questions if people have them on the proposals that I sent, but I'll certainly go into more detail at the May meeting with what I've, what I've found out with whatever information I have.
Yeah, I think Brian, it's probably a good time to field any questions that the board has. They really only got this information today, so.
Yep.
We'll have a further discussion on it regarding bleachers on, at our next meeting. But if there's any questions for you now, if there's anybody who has a pressing question, board members, anyone?
Holly, I just wanted to mention, because we have public with us, that the bleachers are a donation. So this, these are not tax-paid funded. And what Brian's been doing is to find the best possible way to use that donation that has been provided to us.
Great, thank you, Andy, for clarifying. I don't really see anybody itching to, oh, Beth, thank you.
Sorry, not a question, and not a question on the bleachers, but thank you for the proposals. But just wanted to say thank you for putting together the award ceremonies and all that you've done. Because it was really neat to be able to participate in that and watch that. You know, and just, you know, we're all being forced to give up an awful lot. But it's, I'm all for different versions of however we can be creative to not give something up, but just to make it look different. So my family and I watched that together, so we're really thankful for that. And I'm excited for the HB Open, so, and I have a high schooler that's already excited to participate, and so I will participate with her, so I'm excited for that. But thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
Thanks, Beth. Great, thanks Brian, I don't see any other questions for you. I think we need to go back to Rick, do you have a little bit more, Rick, or are you finished? You're not finished?
Well, I'm also, I'm happy to answer any questions people might have.
Okay, so.
Tom has his hand raised.
Oh, well, I can't see Tom, so.
You can't see Tom.
Tom, you're not, you can't see your lovely face. Okay, Tom.
Well, there's a button I press and it says raise your hand, so I pressed it, so I thought that shows up for you, but.
Doesn't show.
The question was to Andy regarding his comment about the donation for the bleachers. Is that an upcoming donation or is that existing balance that has already been donated?
Tom, that one is already donated and is within HB Elevates. And at the appropriate time, I would bring it to the board to accept a donation for HB Elevates once Brian identifies and the board approves the best way to move forward for bleachers.
So, so there's a sum of money that has been donated and a portion of that will be allocated? So there's definite advantage to economizing on the bleachers to leave available money for other things? Is that a correct interpretation?
Yes, it is, and I think the, the work that Brian's done, he's met the specifications that we had hoped for, and he's done that in an outstanding fashion from a budgetary point of view.
Yep, thank you.
I mean, when you compare the three, Brian, thank you very much for looking at the bleachers. That was a great idea.
Yeah. Big difference.
Big difference. Okay, I don't see any other questions for Brian. Rick, are you set for what you have to cover right now? Yes?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great, thank you. Alright, so we can move on to discussion. That would be transportation's the first item on the discussion list, Andy, that's you.
Yep, I just want to let the board know that since our last meeting, we have worked closely with Student Transportation of America. And yesterday, they actually submitted to us a spreadsheet detailing all the costs that they believe are associated with our contract. We sent that document to James O'Shaughnessy, our attorney, who already has our contract. And Jim, Kelly and I will be meeting Monday on a Zoom call to go through that document. And it's our hope to come back in mid-May and have what I'll say a a clearly defined discussion around transportation and transportation costs. Because this proposal that they submitted basically broke down costs from what I'll call a day-to-day basis. Kelly's reviewed that and believes the numbers are correct, just from the terms of what we believe we pay day-to-day. And now we're working with Jim. One of the reasons we're involving Jim is because of the CARES Act. The CARES Act is a very complex law that was recently passed. The attorneys at Drummond and Woodson and probably across the state of New Hampshire are working hard to understand that, waiting for further guidance and rules to come out. And there are some requirements in that law that may force us to say, do something in one area if we want to keep our funding with regard to, say, IDEA grant funds, money that will be coming out to offset potential overages in special ed because of the shutdown. So it's just a very complex situation, and I know we're moving a little slowly on it, but I'd rather be methodical on this one because STA does not qualify, because of their size as a company, for the paycheck protection program, so they're not involved in that. So it's just complex and I'm learning more about elements that I didn't expect to know with regard to the CARES Act and transportation. But we'll be talking about our next meeting date later tonight, and I think by then I'll be able to bring that forward and let the board have a good discussion of where they want to go with regard to transportation costs and what they are willing, if anything, to incur.
Great.
Question?
Go ahead, Tom.
Andy, have they said anything to you that they are losing drivers at this point in time?
They have had some drivers go to unemployment because in some cases, it may be better for them. They are a little concerned with what they will have in the fall for drivers, just because when somebody's been out for work, you learn that you could live without it, you're close to retirement age, some people may make that call. But at the same time, they did receive a call the other day from somebody who wants to start training. So they are open, they have their mechanic and their dispatcher full-time and on every day. I can tell you that all our buses just went through their annual inspections, which we do every spring. And that periodically, each of the buses is taken out for a few miles around town just because they need to be run to keep them in great working order. So that, you know, we're gearing up for a fall opening and just waiting to learn more details.
I was just curious, because I know that the, the delivery companies, Amazon and UPS in particular, are hiring wherever possible, so I didn't know if there was gonna be a potential attrition that would be a setback come fall.
There may be, but I think it will be more from retirement, Tom, than that type of attrition. Because our, the vast majority of our drivers are seasoned veterans.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Andy. So Andy, I'm anticipating that we're going to need to meet again in the beginning of, like, in a couple of weeks. Like, not the third Wednesday, but a different date, right?
Yeah, I was kind of hoping we could probably do, like, somewhere the Wednesday, May 13th, if that works for people's schedules, and then come back at the end of the month. Because I think a lot is gonna change in the next four weeks. You know, we have stay-at-home orders that may, stay-in-place may not. You know, I know we won't be returning to school, but we may get some flexibility around what we could do, say, with the graduation or a prom discussion or something like that.
So we'll have more information, and we'll have more information from the bus company. I just want the board to be aware that we'll probably be meeting again in two weeks, so. Zoom meeting. Maybe not, probably though. Okay, great, thank you. Special education update, is that you, Mr. Thompson?
It is, so I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank all of the student services staff, our case managers, our counselors, nurses, related service providers, para educators. It's my observation that people are working as hard as they, as they ever have. And the end result with that is we're seeing a continuity of services. And in the majority, with the majority of our students, we're actually able to deliver services at the same level that we were when we were in the physical building that are in accordance with what is in their IEPs. And, you know, this is important for a couple of different reasons. The obvious reason is we want to keep students making progress towards their goals and continue to learn. But also, it does reduce our liability. You know, one thing that has been made clear is we are still responsible for the services in a child's IEP. And if we are unable to deliver those services now, you know, we potentially need to provide them at a later date. So the more we're able to continue to do business as usual, the better. And, you know, it, we are seeing a lot of success with, when you think of, you know, speech therapy or occupational therapy, counseling, reading services, you know. Formats like Zoom have been working well. I also want to give a lot of credit to our para educators who are working tirelessly, supporting students, you know, through Zoom and through email and conference calls, supporting students individually and in groups. You know, it's, it's not a secret, remote learning is challenging for students. And it can be even more challenging for students who have disabilities. And so the support network that has emerged as a result of remote learning is just, it's very impressive. And there's a lot of really hard-working people. In regards to extended school year, we have tentative dates of June 29th to August 14th. And I say tentative because the, your approval of the last day of school will obviously affect when we run our extended school year. Again, for those of you who are unaware of, ESY Extended School Year is a service that we provide to students with disabilities, if it has been determined that the summer would cause a level of regression on their IEP goals. And so, in efforts to reduce regression with students, we're actually adding two weeks to ESY. So we typically start the week after 4th of July, so we've added a week on the front end. And we usually finish the first week of August, so we've added a second week in August. The addition of the second week in August is really because we go back to school so late in early September. So adding that extra time to ESY is just another way of ensuring that we are meeting the needs of students and not exposing ourselves to any potential, you know, compensatory education that we might be exposed to when we go back into, to the regular school environment. Additionally, right now, our plan is to hold the majority of ESY remotely. Obviously, we have some contingency plans in place if the environment or the situation changes and we are able to go back into the physical school environment. And right now, the plan would be if we do have a very small number of students that are going to be accessing ESY onsite, that we would use the high school. Because the high school has developed some excellent health and safety protocols upon individuals coming in and out of the building. And with that, I'll entertain any questions that folks might have.
Great, thank you so much, Bob, thanks for all your work and all the people who work on me too.
Yeah, definitely.
Are there any questions for Bob? Uh, Beth?
Sorry, you, I think you almost completely answered my question. So if there was a chance or a need and it was safe to be on campus for physical extended school year, it would all, so all the districts, even the younger students, they would not be in Brookline? They would all go to Hollis Brookline, to the high school, is that correct?
We would, you know, again, we have some health and safety protocols that, and I have to give Amy Rowe and Lauren DeGennaro the credit that they developed that, you know, not only are really solid, but are being shared and used by many other districts as a possible model for ESY. And just the size of the building, you know, every student's, and again, we are talking about 1% of our entire special ed population, we're not talking about a lot of students. You know, each student. You know, each student would have their own classroom assigned to them and we'd be able to practice social distance and other health and safety protocols. So it makes the most amount of sense to use the high school where there's already protocols in place.
Sounds great, thank you.
Great, thank you, Bob. Any other questions? Tom, did I hear you? Okay.
Nope. I'm generally muted, so it takes me a while to respond to an anticipated question.
So you're all set?
I am, thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, we're going to move on to a remote learning update, which I assume is Ms. Gina.
Thank you. So, you know, just as the same as everyone's been saying, I can't say enough about how well we've all adapted, whether I'm speaking to the administration, teachers, the students, the families, support staff. We've gone through quite a number of changes and we've been adapting quite well to it. Going back to April 2nd, I sent out in the morning a survey to all families in the district in the SAU. And I closed it on April 6th in the evening. And we had about 49% participation, which is pretty impressive. I took the information contained within that survey and I read every single comment, the good and, you know, the suggestions for improvement. I divided it between all the buildings and had individual conferences with each building principal and sometimes, you know, with the entire administration team in the building. And we developed implementation plans for how to address some of the concerns or suggestions that were presented to us in those surveys. And those plans demonstrated the willingness of our administration and of our teachers to accept critical feedback. And that's a tough thing to do, to accept feedback that's very direct. But they took that feedback and they used it as an opportunity to grow, to learn new things and to really implement immediately some changes. And I just, I can't say enough about how impressed I was with that process. We really are continuing to change and, you know, we're not perfect. And we see every week as a new opportunity to learn new things and to learn from each other, learn from our, the other districts within the SAU, tricks and tools and you name it. There's just constant professional development taking place with our teaching staff. Now that we're about halfway through remote learning, depending on when the end-of-school date is selected and that last day is in sight, we are going to be working with our teachers and with, our administration's going to work with our teachers in PLC to take a look at courses and curriculum and identify what, if any, pieces of the curriculum haven't been covered or if there have been pieces that were covered but maybe to a lesser depth just given the environment of the remote learning environment that we're in right now. And by the way, we do this every year. We're just expecting that potentially the results are going to look a little differently this year, given the remote learning. But we're going to have deliberate conversations about how do we now take this information, utilize it and make some changes to implement when the students return to us. You know, are, there are some, some folks say that there's concerns in math because it's very sequential. And so how do you start the next course without the prior? The one beautiful thing about it is the curriculum spirals. So it, the topics kind of come back again. And they come back again with the intention of building upon prior knowledge and then going into a greater depth. But knowing what level of depth they had experienced in prior years will allow us to address the topic at an appropriate time within the curriculum and then go into the depth that's needed for that next year. So it's not like we need to take, you know, one hour for one hour. We're weaving it in in a very intentional and efficient manner. And so time will be given to teachers to figure this out and to plan appropriately for this. The next piece that we have to do is really plan, and we've already started, but plan A, B, C, D, E, whatever number of different plans we need to figure out. To talk about returning to school, what will it look like? Will we be returning and everything is fine? Will we have, will we return to school in the remote environment? Or is there some sort of hybrid? So there's a lot of different factors we need to think about and plan for. It's very different opening a school year in a remote environment than it is kind of closing off the year where you already have built that classroom community. And, but starting that classroom, how do you, they get to know 120 students. That's a different challenge. And so we'll have to offer the appropriate professional development for our teachers to kind of really focus on building that classroom community within the remote environment. We are at the advantage that we do have a later start than many districts across the country. So I think the reopening of schools, we'll get some information from, let's say, California and other areas where they start the second week of August. And we'll see what's working and what's not working and definitely use that to our advantage to make sure we're making informed decisions. And I have to say, that's one thing that I've been, you know, very impressed with and very proud of our team is that we are consistently just gathering as much information as possible and really talking through all the scenarios before making a decision. Because what we didn't want to do throughout this is go in one direction, make a decision and then have to do a 180 and kind of backtrack what we had decided. So I suspect that the same will continue throughout the summer, just those constant plans for how to return and what will that look like. But, you know, as we learn more about the restrictions that may or may not be in place, we'll make our decisions accordingly. Certainly, we have a couple of events for our seniors that we're considering and figuring that out. And those are hopefully to come prior to the return of school in the fall. Any questions?
Holly?
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Thank you, Gina. A couple of questions regarding the survey results. Did you find that the expectations of parents and students were aligned with your expectations for delivery? Meaning, are there, did you find that people, certainly not the majority, but some people were expecting either services or accomplishments or maybe going the other way, more, less demanding than what you were, your team was attempting to deliver?
You know, I think that, just based on the preliminary feedback we were receiving from families without being, you know, without putting out a survey, we knew that there were some folks who felt like we were asking for too much and some folks who felt that we weren't asking for enough. So, you know, all students learn at a different pace. You know, students put in a different amount of energy. I remember years ago when I was on the board, we had that conversation about how much homework would each class give. It's hard to say that because every child is going to take a different amount of time for a given assignment. So even when you, it was a little bit more of a challenge for co-op because I asked for a grade level, but I didn't ask for, you know, AP US government. So I don't have course-specific information from the survey, but I was able to tell grade-level-wise where kids were and if they were overwhelmed or doing okay in terms of their expectations. But there was, you know, quite the gamut. But what was really helpful is specific comments that led us to the week in a glance. Because while students who are anywhere from 12 to 17 should be able to manage their schedule, it presents a new challenge when you have a family with four children and maybe two parents who are, and they're all trying to battle for time on Zoom. And what happens when that's just not a possibility? So being able to sort of have that week in advance and then as a family plan out what that week's going to look like, that I think was really important for our families. And, you know, that was spelled out for us in the survey.
Okay. Well, it answers my question. I can see that it's a difficult thing to assess. I just was curious if there was any obvious disconnects and it sounds like it's more shades of gray than black and white. I've been reading a lot of communities around the, around the country are fearing that they will have to implement some sort of a summer program to make up for what's being lost. And that's in contrast, nice contrast to the reports that we heard from the principals. Do you share the, their opinion that there will not necessarily be a, you don't expect a gap that needs to be filled in order to be ready for next year?
I do not. You know, I think one thing that we are really fortunate to have in our community is a really high percentage of participation in our program. So if we have only 40% of our kids participating, well, then 60% are not and they're not engaged in their education. So there will certainly be a gap there. But when you have roughly the same percent participation in remote learning as you do in daily attendance and you have our teachers who are just doing a phenomenal job, teaching, you know, the content in a variety of ways and kind of adapting on a day-to-day basis to best meet the needs of the students. And that's a completely different, it's a different set of issue. You know, I participate in weekly meetings. Andy participates in, you know, two meetings a week. Bob has his meetings. And, you know, at the end of these meetings, we realize that we are so fortunate to have, to be in the place that we are in with the families and the students that we have, the supportive boards and just the teachers that are going above and beyond trying to, you know, it's like everyone's a first-year teacher because this is not what we tried, you know, not what we were trained to do. Yet they are putting in 150% at a time when many of them also are trying to help their own children with remote learning and...
No, I understand. I appreciate that. Just two more short, short questions, hopefully short answers. I'm not editorializing. The first one is, do you, are you able to gather any information from this experience that we will be able to leverage when we go back to conventional teaching? That essentially now we have a whole new set of tools available to some of our students? And the second question is, is there the possibility or has any consideration been given to looping with teachers to bridge that gap that you discussed about starting off the next year?
So looping of teachers presents a challenge when you're not an elementary classroom teacher because each student, you know, selects their own courses. And so you won't have a group of students that are necessarily moving on together. The only exception would be your seventh graders going to eighth grade. And that could be a conversation for Tim to have with his seventh-grade teams to see if they want to go to eighth grade. But I just don't, I don't see that happening. However, I think we've learned a ton. And we were just talking this morning at Leadership that the tools and the skills that we sort of identified that some, some of our teachers are just so talented with this absolutely can, will, can and will be very effective for credit recovery for some of our students. Or some of our students who are actually thriving in this environment and maybe we're less interested in our traditional environment. So I think there's a lot of opportunities depending on what our students' needs are. And we'll kind of figure that out as time passes.
Okay, thank you.
It sounds like that's something to talk about in the future, not right now. You've got so much on your plate. Okay, I have to say I'd like to commend all of you for the response to the survey. I feel like I only have a data point of one, but my data point of one showed a marked improvement between the time the survey was completed until the, until now. Like, I've seen a lot more of some things that I wasn't seeing before. So that's been great. So thank you for all your hard work. Anybody else? Anyone else? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gina. Okay, next on our list is master schedule, middle school, high school. What, who's doing that update? I don't know why that's on the list.
I just wanted Rick and Tim to take a couple of minutes because it's such a big process. And it's more for the community to know that it's ongoing. I know the board realizes that. So I don't care which one starts, but just a quick update where we are with the master schedule and any thoughts on that transition from grade six and grade eight to nine?
So that would be Tim to start.
Sure. So the development of the master schedule is underway, even in the remote environment. Teachers are able to submit their recommendations for the following year. So our sixth-grade teachers have made recommendations for our incoming seventh grade. Our seventh-grade teachers have made recommendations for students moving on to eighth. And then our eighth grade on to ninth. That process, that eighth to ninth started months ago. That was probably the first step in the process. But more recently, our sixth and seventh-grade teachers making those recommendations. Just this week, the parent portal closed for our sixth and seventh-grade parents. And we just have, I believe we are under 10 right now that we are still finishing up with the course selection process. The next steps after that, my administrative team and school counseling is working very hard in gathering information, both from teacher input, parent input into the development of the teams. We're working with Carol Tyler to making our newly adopted and approved schedule come to fruition. So after the team development, once our sections of classes are determined, the number of sections, and then teacher preps throughout the building, we will start to be putting into play, into action, that master schedule that we've worked so hard on all year. So right now, the next step is the development of the teams in both seventh and eighth. And that comes with a lot of input from, from a lot of different people. It's a multi-step process that will take us then to the next step in the development of the actual bell schedule and plugging in our sections.
So Tim, would you say this is pretty much on schedule like last year? Or are you a couple of weeks behind in terms of students finding out who their team is and what their schedule looks like? Just so folks at home, if they're listening.
Yep, so the team and schedule process, we will unroll together. We are in the process. And I know this is a little off the path of the actual schedule talk. But for our incoming transition students, for the students transitioning from sixth into seventh, we, as a staff, are in the process of putting together a virtual tour of sorts of the building and of courses and programming available for parents and students to view. The goal will be to have that done before the end of the school year. And then following that will be the release of the teams and schedules. Will probably be into the summer with, depending on what that last date is, the unveiling of the schedules and the teams will come into play, I would say, early summer.
Great, thank you, Tim. Thanks a lot. I'm sure it's hard. Any questions from the board for Tim before we move on to Rick? Okay, seeing none. Rick?
So our schedule is on target with very little disruption despite all that's been going on. So huge thank you to Amanda and Lauren who have been working quickly behind the scenes to make this a reality as well as Carol Tyler, who always assists us on the backend power school. We have projected class sizes and I have teaching assignments for the most part, ready to go for next year. So we're right on target with where we want to be. Class sizes at this point, as we know, can always change as soon as you assign a period to them. That will fluctuate and we'll start losing sections and/or students depending if it's period one or seven in particular. You know, I'm glad to see that we have AP French making a comeback, which is good. I do, I want to commend the board. If you think, remember, yeah, about three years ago, we hired an individual for computers and engineering who also happened to be fluent in French. And that is now paying dividends because I were able to use and deploy him to teach a section of French, which now allows us to offer the AP section. And it may be small, but at least we're offering AP again. So to have someone who, you know, that kind of flexibility and, you know, having someone like that that can teach basically math, engineering and French, it's a pretty big deal. Probably this is the only state you're going to have that or the only school you're going to have that. So little tweaks like that are great to see. Also happy to see our computer science and engineering courses be very healthy as well because there was a sizable investment committed by the school board, all of us, a while ago. And that is holding strong. So things are in great shape. Those numbers will change, I'm sure. But in terms of what the projected class sizes are, I'm pretty happy with them as they stand. And we'll see where that goes, what happens as we go forward. We are... We are looking for ways to transition the eighth grade up, obviously, if this environment's difficult. I think I know, obviously, we'll be doing something, whether it's virtual or hybrid, or depending on what's allowed. I think the bigger question when I look at research or discussions going on with, you know, administrative journals across the country is, how do you reconnect with kids when they come back? As much as this is, it was a trauma, I think, and shock and awe for all of us to suddenly not be in school anymore. I think we're gonna have a similar kind of shock and awe when we have school back. Because you're talking about the longest summer potentially any of us have had, or that I can remember. And then suddenly you're gonna be back at school again and be thirty to, or twenty to a classroom. And let's go to assembly in a gym. It's gonna be kind of traumatic for some kids. So, and probably staff too. So I think the focus really is gonna have to be, um, letting social, emotional learning lead the way and trying to really think slowly and concretely about how do we connect with kids and reengage kids just to being back together in the building, because that's gonna be really different than what we're doing now.
Very true. Thank you very much, Rick. Um, yeah, that's a really good point. And hopefully we can make sure that the board's as supportive as we can be in that, in those endeavors. We do have, I guess, we'll have a meeting in May, and maybe we'll be able to see a report on the class sizes at that point. Or maybe it would be later than that. I don't know, Rick, where you are in that.
I'm sure we could produce something. I don't know. It depends on the, we're running some of those numbers now. Um, like I said, we have the sections and everything, so I, I believe we could, we could supply something as long as everyone has the usual understanding that things can change. The, the difficult piece is, once we get these schedules, we hand them to students, and that's when the great game begins. Uh, add drop, I don't want this, I don't want that, give me this. So that's, that's gonna be harder. Yeah.
We talked about this policy, trying to get, I know it's unprecedented times, but I know we talked about it in policy and kind of revamped the policy a little bit so that we'd at least get a report out in May.
Yes.
Get the actual month, but we just want to make sure that we kind of follow that, because.
Yep.
Yeah, that was great. All right.
Yeah, if we were, if we were talking two, I think we, we, we were mentioning two May dates, uh, the first one would obviously be more challenging than, than the latter.
Right, I think if we have a second meeting in May, or even in early Ju- I mean, we might have to postpone to early June, but yeah, I think that, Andy, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I think the second meeting in May or right beginning of June.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. Um, great, thanks so much. I think we, at this point, we have graduation and prom, class of 2020, um, on the agenda. I just want to point out that we have our student body president with us, Mary, so, um, I'll let Rick and Mary sort of take the reins on this and kind of explain where we're at with graduation and prom. I'm sure many members of the public who will be paying attention would like to hear about this, so.
Yep, so I'm gonna let Mary speak on this, since she's been sitting quietly, and I'll, I will jump in and add in. She's been along for every step of the process, as have been, uh, her members, her colleagues in student council. I do want to commend them again, uh, for their approach to all of this. It's been difficult. There have been a variety of things that we've considered. They've done surveys, they reviewed the data. So, um, it's just a lot, there's a lot, a lot of work that's been done, and I think Mary can accurately describe kind of where we're at so far. Um, go ahead, Mary.
So, um, I'll start off with, uh, prom. So right now, we are having prom, um, at the same venue we did the Doubletree in Nashua. Um, and we've pushed it out to July twenty-third, and it's gonna look exactly the same. However, if social distancing isn't lifted by, as of right now, I think, June first, unless Ms. Prairie was able to push that out. Um, if it's not lifted by June first, then we're going to have to cancel with the Doubletree just because we need to give them notice that we won't be coming. And in that case, we will have time to plan something, uh, prom at the high school, likely outdoors, some sort of barbecue style with a tent. Um, so that's our other alternative. The one good thing about if that were to happen would be we would pro- we already have a lot of parents who have reached out and said they'd be willing to, um, donate things, time, money, various items that we need. So that is one plus side of that. Um, for graduation, we are talking about pushing it out to July twenty-fifth, should social distancing, uh, not be lifted by June. Um, we also came up with some other alternatives, some, saw some student feedback that was negative. So, um, we kind of wanna, we're gonna meet next week, see where we want to move forward with that. But one idea is if, if they're able to meet with larger groups, but not quite the full size, we would have a few different graduations going on simultaneously on the different fields. Um, students of, like, groups of, say, fifty. Um, that way, there is still some sort of ceremony. Students really want in-person graduation. However, if that's not possible, we also talked about the idea, Mr. Barnes, you might be able to explain this one a little bit better, because I kind of don't quite understand it. But it has to do with splicing together a video of each individual student graduating and having the pre-recorded speakers also woven in.
Yep. So there's, there are, uh, obviously, if you read the news, there are a lot of different ways to attack the problem. One of the things we could do is some sort of pre-recorded video, do a lot of the speeches that would be traditionally done, um, pre-recorded, ready to go in advance and put up there. I would probably be tasking Brian Pompous, now that he's our film production editor, thank you, Brian, um, to, to see, to put something together. Uh, and then we would then, if we could do something in person, we would do probably, you know, it would be that what Mary's describing, if it's fifty people allowed to gather, we have a big giant campus between the high school and middle school. Maybe we divide by a, by, you know, divide up in groups of fifty, and we do some sort of individual student recognition so they can do, hear their name called, and receive their diploma, and have some sort of celebration, um, with a very short list, probably of two family members per student, to go along with that. If, whether we, that does or doesn't work, um, I think there were, another piece of this too would be, parades are popular now. I could envision a scenario that would likely be supported with the, at least with the, um, Hollis Police, and, and we'd have to reach out to Chief Town, but running a parade route through the towns of Hollis and Brookline, it's been the tradition of the seniors, uh, to do a parade at the beginning of the year. So it'd be kind of a nice way to go out, and that would be a way for quite literally, um, everybody along those routes to see kids. And I don't see how we'd be breaking any rules because people are allowed to stand outside of wave. So it would just be a matter of, uh, planning that in advance. There are a lot of options. The point, the focus has been having a plan A, B, and C, and then buying time, because we have a lot of time right now. And, um, you know, the July, June is actually kind of far away. It doesn't feel like it, but it is. So the more time we can buy, the better, the more we know and make decisions based on that, knowing that if there might be a thing, you know, that we're, social distancing never eases, but there have been some encouraging signs even the last week or so, uh, that things could be a little bit different. So I think we're in pretty good footing. It's just a matter of narrowing down those options in the survey that Student Council did was great. Basically, the more virtual we are, the less kids are interested. That's what it boils down to. Um, that was very clear. So that's how, that's how it broke down.
Thank you so much, both of you. Does anybody from the board have any questions for Mary or for Rick, or comments? Go ahead, Kate.
So I actually just, I love the parade idea, and I'm wondering, are you considering doing that as an alternative to graduation, or just something you would do also, no matter what?
I think it could be both. I think it could be, you could easily, with all these ideas that have been going on, you could easily do a virtual kind of graduation, and then you could do it as a parade as the in-person piece, if it was allowed. So currently parades are allowed. They're buzzing around in my house in Amherst, um, almost weekly. So, which is great, but if, that's clearly allowed. So, you know, I think our students are well-equipped if we describe what the expectations are, um, and we'd obviously enlist the advice of fire and police for safety purposes. Um, I think, you know, I just, I think that's something that could work, um, pretty well, in ice, on its own, or in conjunction with something. I just have a feeling it's gonna happen, whether, whether it's in isolation or not. That, it is gonna happen. It's a matter of how we're gonna maximize it and make it have the biggest effect possible. And I do think a farewell piece would be, uh, kind of a, a nice positive emotional send-off for, for people that could be a little, a safe alternative to gathering on a field of fifty, which may not be allowed.
Yeah, well, I think just having a senior here and hearing, you know, a lot of what her friends are saying, is I think they are missing out on those last days of school and seeing people, and so having a parade, I think, is a great idea to do towards the end of school, regardless of what else is happening with graduation.
Yeah, I see, I hear what you're saying, Kate. Like, do the parade no matter what, and if we have a graduation in July, or, you know, so, I think the students will hear that, and I think the student government is doing a great job organizing all these ideas. So, um, anyone else? Liz?
Just a question, the signs that the Booster Club is ordering, can they be incorporated with the parade? Because some of us live rather off the beaten track. If we put it in our yards, no one will ever see it. Can they be put up by the high school so they can be sort of on the route?
So we have about, uh, we, speaking of the boosters, there's about thirty signs, um, extra signs that we ordered that were unclaimed. So we, I, I asked them to save those, and they would, for a later, for a later date, for that exact reason. So that we could put them somewhere else, um, to kind of decorate the route, uh, along, whether it's coming into the school, or along a parade route. It'll just be nice to have those props to be able to pull out for whatever the celebration's gonna end up looking like.
And so Liz, from, I think what you're saying is like, could you, if you have a sign for airing, could you come and put it, could you make sure it's on the parade route?
Yeah.
That was my question. Is that your question?
I think that'd probably be the question, although frankly, we may have, that may be so, that may require a permit from the town, but hopefully if they would allow us to put it up for, you know, a couple of hours, one day, we could get by without going through the permitting process.
I think if it's on the school property, you'll be safe. So if it was up, it was, if it was on Cavalier Court, I think we'd be okay. Um, but yeah, we could probably check with the town on that. That would probably.
But I, but I'm very thankful for that, I, that they got ordered. I thought, when that email came in, I was very pleased to see that. I had seen lots of other school districts around the country basically doing that for their kids. So I was delighted to see and claim ours for our students, so.
And we thank the Booster Club too for doing that, taking that on, um, as, as an item. So that was a huge help.
Yeah, it was great for the Booster Club to do that. Beth, I'd see your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted the chance to quickly tell Mary thank you for all of this and, and all of her classmates. I am just beyond impressed at, um, how well you guys are communicating and, um, you know, making your voices part of this and to help plan and the resilience you guys are showing. It's just, it's very, very impressive. So just wanted to say thank you to you and all your classmates.
Well, thank you guys for being so supportive and, um, listening to our feedback and hearing our wants and wishes.
Thank, it's, it's tough, but you're doing a great job, all of you. Thank you. Okay, so at this point, um, is there anything else, anyone else who has comments on graduation or prom? I want the public to know that that is being worked on. So no other questions? I don't see anything. Um, we have to talk a little bit about the EF Tours situation. Um, Andy, I'm not sure if this is gonna be you, or Rick, or the two of you, and, um, you were, just to let the board know, I received an email today, um, from a parent who's involved in this, and, and there's definitely some disappointment and frustration. And so if we could just be very transparent of everything that we've done at this point would be really helpful.
Yeah, I'm gonna turn it over to Rick. Uh, we have worked closely on this, uh, but he has done, uh, yeoman's work, not only within our district, but with his administrative colleagues across the state. And he'll be happy to outline the steps of where we are, and will be more than willing to take any feedback from the board.
Excellent. So this process all really began right when things started to change. Um, we started getting notification that things were not going well in Europe, knowing we were heading that way. Uh, people, a lot of, um, scrambling was being undertaken. At that time, EF was presenting out alternatives. Those alternatives seemed very reasonable, given the information that we just didn't know, no one knew, um, kind of where things necessarily were gonna land. So they were offering vouchers, which sounded somewhat reasonable at the time, um, in a variety of forms. Uh, one of them was, um, in, in, from EF's opinion, they were going beyond what was offered in their contract with families, in terms of offering, um, what they would call a full cash voucher, which is transferable to anybody else. You can sell, if it's a four thousand dollar trip, you can sell that to anybody you want, and EF will honor it. Um, they're also offering, uh, trips next year, uh, to, to kind of make up for the lost trips of this year at a full cash piece. They're offering out individual vouchers, um, for families of what many of our families came to want, which is completely understandable, and I concur with, is a full cash refund, given that this is a completely unprecedented circumstance with no, you know, precedent. Our, our families wanted a full cash refund. So the best that EF was offering was everything back except a thousand dollars. They're gonna keep a thousand, so, you know, make that twenty-five percent of your money or more, depending on your trip. Uh, they were gonna keep in kind and then return the rest to you. Otherwise, you have to take one of their other options. Um, so I've been working closely with Superintendent Corey. I've reached out to, and had direct contact with the Commissioner of Education here in New Hampshire. He had a liaison to the Attorney General. We proceeded very slowly because quite honestly, I wanted to give EF every opportunity they had to reconsider. Um, at times, it seemed like they might. They've kind of always left the door just slightly ajar. Um, but what ended up happening, once I, the, I was, the Commissioner of Education also stepped in and put out a letter, a, what I'll call an open letter, to all travel companies asking for a full refund. I made EF aware of that. They were aware of it. That didn't change their position. Um, I was in contact with, uh, some other schools throughout the state who are in a similar position. Um, and not everyone wanted to adopt. I felt like we needed to apply kind of, um, maximum leverage strategy with them, which is just not doing business with them anymore. We, they earn a tremendous amount of money from our schools, from our school in particular, when you look at how many trips we run per year. Uh, I was hopeful that the Attorney General, um, might be able to take action. But once EF decided that the, the voucher was fully transferable, they decided that, at least I was informed through the contact of the DOE, that that wasn't really gonna be actionable on their part, because there was no real crime being committed. Um, I'm sure it hasn't stopped some from contacting them, which is perfectly fine. So at that point, um, I had been already, I already had to talk to them back in March, EF, the the Vice President there at the company, explaining what would come, and that this is what we wanted, and it was a simple matter of business. And, uh, being fair and ethical, um, regardless of what was legal. And they thought, said it probably wouldn't change, but, you know, keep in touch, and we'll try to work it out. At the end of the day, they, um, were not willing to change their position. So, um, I had already said we were partying ways that I felt strongly that I needed to carry through on that on behalf of the families, because that's the only real recourse that I could see would happen at that point is to um, suspend any dealings with them, which will impact their, their business. And, um, I'm sure, you know, there's been reports in the news. Um, I don't know if specific to EF, but there's been reports in the news of other travel industry, um, travel-related business with schools, that people are pretty unhappy with the situation. I don't agree with their decision, but, and I made that very clear in my correspondence. And I put that out there, and I also wanted to share it with families, which I did, so they could see the back and forth between myself and the Vice President of what the expectations were, and having, that we're disappointed they're not being met, and that, that was it. We were done, um, with doing business with them. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. We really waited and went slowly and gave every opportunity for some sort of resolution, something else than, um, we're gonna keep a thousand dollars. Um, and, you know, I would be upset too, plainly, if I was a family. I would not be happy about it. And I'm not happy about it as a principal, and I'm not happy about it for anybody. I, I don't, I just don't think it's the right thing to do. But that's, we didn't, we could, I feel good about that.
Thanks, Rick. Are there any comments? My only comment is, if we're not gonna do business with them next year, or offer trips next year, how does a family use their voucher for four thousand dollars?
So it is transferable, and this is one of their selling points. You're, you can also send your child on an individual trip if you want. Um, but what they, what that doesn't take into account, or s- some might say, no one particularly cares, is who's gonna send their now sixteen-year-old to Europe next year at seventeen, or their seventeen is gonna be eighteen-year-old? It's not gonna happen. So it's fine to offer that. It just doesn't mean anything in a real-world context. So there, it is, it's difficult. It's put families in a bind. Um, and it's hard for me, and to your point of, how do we allow that? That's a, that's a thing I struggle with, um, because I, I think I have people who run these trips who now have lost some faith in working with EF, and I would have, I'm having a hard time saying, well, you really should just run a trip anyways. Because it's, and it's hard for me to recommend something, for you to approve something, that I am struggling with to say this is a vendor that I trust, that we should give, based on this experience.
So another question, um, would you say most families are just taking the refund less than twenty-five percent? Is that generally what families are doing?
I don't, I can't say for sure. I think, I think, I, that's why I suspect that's what's happening. I suspect that most are just eating a thousand-dollar loss and moving on.
Okay, and then two more, um, is, if there is a class action suit, that's what I've heard through this email that I got today. Is there something the school board could do to, um, facilitate a different end?
Yeah, I guess I would defer it to Superintendent Corey on that one. I don't, I don't know because it becomes a legal question.
We have a, a meeting, as I said, Monday on the transportation contract. So I can definitely run this by Jim and see if there is, um, he believes is a position the board should take on this. Because I'm in the same camp as Rick. Um, we had a number of things that were going on. I'll use the middle school DC trip. Um, you know, that vendor and all those people in my mind have my support in the future when they're looking, for them. Um, this just made no business sense to me and it was very, very frustrating. And, you know, we did go all the way up to the Attorney General and it just, from, from their mind, because there is some compensation coming back and it's kind of an exchange for what, from a contractual point of view, looks like the same. But this is a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic and it, it, they should have done more and they didn't. So I will ask on Monday, I'll reconnect with Rick and we'll take any steps that we can. Um, you know, as, as the board is aware, I'm on a number of New England associations that involve superintendents. Uh, and this is one of those things that we have discussed in some of our virtual meetings, because this is not just New Hampshire. This is a significant dollar amount, uh, across the New England states that I'm aware of.
Well, thank you. Thanks a lot, Andy. Okay, any other questions, anyone else? Beth, go ahead.
Just a quick one, I'm sorry if I missed it, but how many students roughly, or how many families are impacted by this? How many?
Uh, I'm just gonna go off a rough number because I don't have the list, but you're, you're probably looking at in excess of fifty, fifty families.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so Andy, you'll follow up with our attorney on this as well. And also maybe question about any kind of liability that we have? If there's anything. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Um, next is the donation of lights for the turf field. That's on the discussion point. Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, I just wanted to provide the board an update at this meeting and, and more information to follow. Um, working with our nonprofit entity HB Elevates, uh, primarily Gerald Smith, uh, we were able to secure, uh, a donation for the lights for the turf field. I'd like to publicly thank, uh, Michelle and Carlton Defoe. Uh, they have stepped forward and, uh, will be working with me and our construction company over the coming months, uh, to come back to the board with a proposal to allow this lighting to be put in place. It's been a part of our original plan for the turf field. Um, we always had hoped that somebody would step forward. Uh, and this wonderful supportive family with three kids in our school has, has decided to do that. Uh, I've been in regular communication with them and, um, we have reached out to Musco Lighting. It's the company that was on our design plan that we submitted for all our permits and everything, as well as Quirk Construction in Teagan Bond. And we're trying to just put a package together that I can bring back to the board. Uh, and then at that point, we would be looking to accept the donation, uh, and move forward with those over the, the coming months. Uh, just to give you the magnitude of the donation, this is, uh, will range somewhere between two hundred eighty thousand and three hundred and twenty thousand dollars uh, that this family is going to provide, uh, for this to take place.
Thank you, Andy. That's terrific news. And thanks to the Dufau family. Are there any comments or questions about this at this point?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the board obviously expresses great gratitude to that family for that. And, um, we'll have more details on that next time and have an opportunity to vote on the donation. Are there any, no questions? Okay, great, thank you. Um, the annual meeting update. So I'll start with that. That's the next part of discussions. Um, just to inform the board and the public, we are in, um, our attorney and the co-op district moderator have been working, um, back and forth for the past few weeks and days on another method of hosting, um, holding a meeting. Um, as many of you have probably seen, Bo attempted a drive-through voting. Um, we are considering things like that. I'm not gonna get too bogged down in the weeds of the details. I've been on, on all of the emails and in the loop, as, as has been the Chair of the Budget Committee, just so that we kind of can see how this might play out. We are still looking at a two-day meeting with the potential of having the first day be more of a, I don't wanna use this language intentionally, but it's sort of like a deliberative session where we would work on any kind of amendments. We would make a series of rules and, um, vote on those. We've talked about doing this in a parking lot. There's all sorts of things that are being played out. Um, but just so you know, the attorney is, um, looking at everything to make sure that we're meeting legal requirements as best we can. Andy, do you wanna add to any of that?
No, I, I think that's a, a pretty good summary. And I think in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to kind of take a variety of different things and put them together in a proposal and get that out to you via, uh, a board meeting, hopefully the middle of May.
Great, thanks. I will tell you that the intention is to make sure that every voter has an opportunity to weigh in on both the, um, warrant and to vote. So any other, any questions? I'm, we'll, we'll forward you some of the details, but it's in progress. No questions? Great, thank you. Um, school breakfast prices, fiscal year twenty-one.
Yes, um, reaching out to Amy Cassidy, our Fruit Service Director. Uh, she is recommending, uh, an increase to breakfast that is simply based on the increased cost of fruit. For those newer board members, we started this a, a few years ago under Amy's leadership. It is thriving. Uh, and we have a number of kids who are participating in the program. And one of the biggest things they enjoy and like is the fresh fruit. Those costs are going up exponentially. So this, uh, slight increase will allow us to, uh, continue what has become a very strong program for us. We're making the same recommendation to our two elementary districts, which they actually approved earlier today, just so you know. And we're looking for school breakfast to be, uh, a dollar seventy-five, which we have coming up, uh, during our deliberative portion of the meeting. Uh, it's still a bargain for a dollar seventy-five for a breakfast. Uh, and again, we still always provide the, the free and reduced lunches and breakfast for those students who qualify. And while I'm on the subject, I just wanted to publicly thank Amy. Um, we continue to deliver meals to, uh, needy students. This has gone exceptionally well. Uh, Amy and working with Bob and other members of the SAU have put in tremendous protocols for the health and safety around the delivery of these lunches. Uh, that number has grown as the pandemic goes on. But we're also been, uh, very fortunate. Um, we have a outstanding relationship with N sixty-eight. For those of you who don't know that, it's the organization to end hunger over the weekend. Uh, that goes very strong. And one of our sixth grade teachers, who is also a volunteer at, um, N sixty-eight, has been running a virtual five K that's been going on for about two, maybe three weeks now. And they've raised thirty-seven hundred dollars for N sixty-eight. And that's just one more example of the tremendous outpouring of support that the two communities have put together, uh, since we started, started this pandemic. Anything that we've needed or asked for, uh, has shown up. And I think that's just a credit to the, the people we deal with and the people we work for. So I really appreciate that. And that's where the school breakfast increase is coming from.
Thank you, Andy. Thanks. Are there any questions from the board on that? We'll be voting on that later on under deliberations. Okay, so we're gonna move into deliberations now, seeing no questions. Um. I'm just gonna start with that. We need to go, um, to see what action the board's gonna take regarding authorizing the superintendent to hire, accept resignations and terminate staff during the months until returning to in-person school. Um, this is something we do, right, Andy, every year. It's, gives you permission over the summer to make changes that you see fit. Um, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, this is becoming more important as we're seeing in the two districts that already have passed their budgets because we're running into a highly competitive market for teachers. And, uh, my worry would be, let's say we met May thirteenth and I could offer a contract, uh, after that. Waiting the two weeks before we come back to an end of May meeting, I'm not sure if our number one candidate will be there. Now, I will share with you, we've been doing a number of interviews, uh, because of our reputation as a district and our administrative team, uh, and our principals at the building level, we have a number of staff who are looking to join us once we pass our budget. And all of them have committed to basically waiting to see if our budget passes. So I think that's a, a credit to Rick and to Tim and everything they've established at the building levels. But I think this just gives us one more tool that if Rick calls me and says, hey, I've got a great science candidate and they've got an offer from X, I'd like to offer, we, we could not only offer, we could hire. Uh, it just gives us a little bit extra of, uh, uh, potential to, to get the person we want.
Great, thanks, Andy. So I need a motion to authorize the superintendent to hire, accept resignations and terminate staff during the months until returning to in-person school and require notification to the board of such actions.
So moved.
Okay, I've got, moved by Beth, seconded by Tom. Is there any discussion on this? Any questions, comments?
I have a question.
Great, Tom.
Andy, is it just, uh, that we're trying to be responsible? Or are we legally prohibited from, um, offering or hiring before the budget's approved?
We could offer it, Tom. I just worry that you never know what could happen to the budget, especially as we go through what I'll call some tough economic decisions. And if the budget was, um, reduced, there would be the concern that we had offered and obligated ourselves to a cost we might not be able to afford.
Is, is that any different than the situation that we will face with, um, returning staff?
We, we won't be able to offer returning staff a contract till fifteen days after the, well, within fifteen days of the annual budget being passed.
So my point is that, that our returning staff is at the same risk that a potential new hire would be if you hired them before the budget, correct? Or, or are you saying that we would be obligated with a new hire where we're not with returning staff?
I would feel it's just the opposite. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of bound for the returning staff as long as they were renominated. And if I had to have flexibility, what I wouldn't fill first is the open positions or the open positions we thought we could, uh, do without. I'm not, I'm not envisioning that happening, but I just think it's prudent not to take that risk.
So how many new candidates, I mean, if you have multiple new candidates, who's waiting? Are they, are there multiple waiting for a single position?
Uh, well, we have two history openings, a science opening in both buildings, so one at the middle school, one at the high school.
No, my point is, are there multiple people waiting for a single opening?
Um, we.
Or have you identified a first choice?
We, we have identified the first choice. What we will, what we're working with legal counsel on again is an offer letter. But that offer letter would contain language for the first time ever that is contingent on the successful complete, su- successful passing of the.
Passage of the budget?
Budget.
Okay.
That good, Tom? Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm gonna need a roll call vote on this. Um, I'm just gonna go in order of your, who I see on the screen. Krista?
Krista, aye.
Beth?
Beth, aye.
Cindy?
Cindy, aye.
Kate?
Kate, aye.
Liz?
Liz, aye.
And Tom?
Tom, aye.
And Holly, aye. So that's seven, oh.
Just a point of clarification, does this, uh, this carries us, assuming we're not going back to in-person this school year, this carries us through the summer, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Um, all right, so now we need to, um, take a, we need to take action regarding the last day of school for seniors. So I think I need a little feedback on that, a little, and then we'll make the motion after that.
Rick, would you like to, uh, weigh in on the seniors' last day?
Yes, so in considering all that is going on, um, and the amount of unbelievable, uh, unprecedented effort that I've seen on behalf of the seniors and the entire student body, um, the amount of work that's being put in under the circumstances, given that we've worked through the, almost all of April break, I think it makes sense to end, uh, school for the seniors on May the twenty-second as being their last actual day for instruction. That also coincides as the last day of the AP exams. So that would kind of line up nicely there. Um, the twenty, that following week would be what, you know, we would traditionally have held, see what we'd call senior week, senior activities. Obviously, there's a lot of things we can't do during that week, but we're talking about things that we might be able to do currently, um, which includes award ceremonies. The twenty-fifth is Memorial Day. Um, that would, we, that would be a holiday. Um, might give some time, but great. It's a, a nice time to end because there's a little bit of a natural pause there too. Um, and then we'd have graduation. It's currently set for the twelfth. We don't think that's gonna stay, but it's still entirely possible that we could have graduation if something miraculous happened between now and then. Um, if not, then the, the other plans that Mary spoke about, um, what spoke well about would, would go then trigger into place in terms of, um, graduation and prom and that type of stuff. We still would anticipate holding our senior awards night that week. It would probably be virtual, um, along the lines of what Brian was able to produce for the athletics department of, of an awards. Um, there's a variety of ways that I think we could do that and make it worthwhile and give the seniors the proper recognition that they deserve. I'm sure there'll be other ideas for activities in there. Um, you know, it would be great if there could be some, we have to obviously be collecting materials during that time as well. We have to come up with some mechanisms for that. But given where we are and the amount of work that's being done on behalf of this class and all that they've had to, all the loss that they've endured, um, I, I think that's a fitting end to their year. But obviously, I don't get to make that decision.
Are there any questions or comments on that?
What is, what is the calendar currently called for, for the last day?
They would go.
For seniors.
Go ahead, Rick.
So the last day, I believe, so the twelfth, I'm just going through my calendar here, was.
Is it the fifth?
It would be the fifth, I think.
Yep, that was the death.
Does this require approval from the state because of the total number of days or hours of instruction?
No, no, my understanding is we're well exceeded. And I know, um, I, Assistant Superintendent Burks, I can speak to that. But we've, we're, they're well over even at the twenty-second.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, so again, a roll call vote.
We have to have a motion.
All right, I'm making it, then, give me a minute. Um, I need a motion to set the last day of the twenty nineteen twenty school year for seniors as May twenty-second, twenty twenty.
Some moves.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Beth. Beth or Cindy? I don't know. Okay. Okay, roll call. We'll go to Krista.
Krista, aye.
Beth?
Aye.
Cindy?
Cindy, aye.
Kate?
Kate, aye.
Liz?
Aye.
Tom?
Tom, aye.
And Holly, aye. Well, that's seven, zero. Okay, next, we need to talk a little bit about the last day of school that passed, by the way. Maybe you didn't know. Um, just wanna be all clear now. On the last day of school for the re, for our seventh through eleventh graders. So, um, who's weighing in on that one?
I'm gonna go through that for you, Holly. Um, what we're recommending is a, what I'll call a phased approach to the closing of school. And what I mean by that is we're looking at Friday, June fifth, as the last, what I'll call, new day of instruction. Meaning, we don't want teachers after that to be introducing new topics, because what we would like to do is kind of do end new topics on the fifth, use the eighth, the ninth, and the tenth, uh, as remediation, uh, going after students who need to make up work, continuing to provide special ed services and, and follow up with those students, deliver OT speech, those type of things. Uh, that would continue, uh, right through the eleventh and the twelfth. So we'd have five days of basically what I would call making sure that we're reaching out to all those students. Some have done very, very well in this environment. Some of them have struggled a little bit. So giving that, them that time, uh, to maybe do extra Zooms, uh, catch up on some things. So the last day for students that we're proposing is June twelfth. Because we are going through April vacation and not doing state assessment, we're really picking up a number of instructional hours. we're really picking up a number of instructional hours, quite a bit of hours. So this makes us in compliance with the CBA, because that was a big piece of discussion. Teachers would be in the following Monday, which I believe is the fifteenth and sixteenth, potentially the seventeenth. I don't have it right in front of me right now. And they would be using that for grading, room pack up, all of those type of things. We want to spend some time just kind of making sure we have everything that worked well, what didn't go well, kind of knowing where we're at in case we had to open this school year remote learning. We believe this is a long instructional year. Some of the districts are getting out earlier. But we really want to reduce the gaps as much as we potentially can. We're also very conscious, as Bob talked about earlier, with extended school year, changing that date earlier would force us to incur further costs with regard to special ed and E S Y and potentially compensatory services. So I think this is a solid date. It has been discussed with the union. We did go through the CBA. Gina and Bob and I met with the union president. And we did adopt the same phased-in approach today in Hollis and Brookline. So that's what I'm recommending, is a final day of June twelfth, but no new work after June fifth.
And what's the last day for teachers?
Am I correct, Gina, is it the seventeenth or the sixteenth in the co-op?
So the co-op teachers have three days beyond the last day for students. So Wednesday, the seventeenth, would be the last day for teachers.
Thank you.
Will you still be conducting PDA, PD?
We will be doing some PD, but we're gonna have to look at some different things, too, because we have so many materials to collect. And then there's safety issues around the collection of those materials and how are we gonna work on all that? So, you know, we've got textbooks that really should be collected and then left to sit for a couple of days before anybody touches them. So there's a, there's a bunch of safety pieces here. And we feel that we might be doing a little less PD and a little more, I'll call it, room closure, course closure.
Will this require any kind of a sidebar to implement?
No, because it complies strictly with the contract.
Okay, I thought we had a fixed number of professional development days that we're hinging on having those days at the end of the year. That's my concern.
Well, we still are having the days at the end of the year. I just, I wouldn't call them the traditional professional development because they're gonna spend more time.
Okay, so they'll fulfill the contractual obligation?
Yes, thank you.
So you want a motion? Do you want a motion?
I'll do, one second, I have a question. I have questions.
We can, we can still make the motion, though.
I know, I just want to ask Rick a question and then I'll make the motion. Rick, you, final exams, have we addressed that at all?
Yeah, no, thank you for that. I, I would like to ask the board to just consider where they stand with final exams. I'm not asking for a vote or anything like that tonight. You obviously have this item already on the agenda. There's, I certainly have my opinion on whether we should have finals at the end of the year. I think as a staff, we're talking extensively about what that should look like, given all that has gone on. But, you know, and ever since we'd be meeting in two weeks, I would, I would, in this, given the circumstances, I would like to give the school board the opportunity to provide input as to whether we should hold finals at all, actually, this year.
Would you like that input now, or would you like
I'm happy to have it now if people want to provide it now. I don't, you know, I wanted to at least give you some time to think about it.
Does anybody want to talk about that now, or would you like to wait till May? You have any comment?
I think we should wait till May.
Okay, okay.
Great, that works.
Well, I mean, my only question is, when are we gonna make a decision? That would be a reason to have an earlier school board meeting, a later one, because I think students need to know whether or not they're going to have final exams sooner rather than later. And I would hate to put that off for another, you know, till the middle of May, which is really only gonna be a couple of weeks before the end of the school year.
My only other question is, would this impact their midterm grade? Would it make it way heavier on their grade point?
No, I would not be in favor of doing anything that made a test have a massive increase in something like a midterm, like turning it to twenty percent, I would not be in favor of that at all. What I would consider, it would be taking that ten percent that was the final grade and just sprinkling it over the other categories that we grade. So that you split it up, two percent or whatever it is for homework, for, you know, tests and quizzes and that type of thing, participation, just spreading it evenly across the grades. It would have, it would be a huge impact.
How many of the classes rely on a final exam to determine whether or not there is comprehension?
Well, I can tell you, it's more, I think it's more, it's really a tool, especially for math and science, that rely on it pretty heavily, given the sequential nature of their work. I think it's less so, by, at least since in my ten years here, it's been less and less in the humanities. We have, again, fifty percent of our kids who are gonna be taking an AP exam. For a lot of them, that is their final, and that's how we've treated it. If you take the AP exam, you are exempt from any kind of final exam. So math and science, probably more so. You know, humanities, everything else, probably a little bit less to a certain degree, because there's a lot of alternative modes of assessments, whether it's presentations, projects. But even if it is presentations and projects, you're still putting, you know, quite a bit of work for that chunk of a percentage of your grade.
Would you be comfortable letting the teachers determine whether or not they need a final to come to a conclusion as to whether or not the students are proficient?
I would be very comfortable with deciding as a staff what we want to do and how to move forward and then, you know, depending on the subject, making that decision. Because I do know with classes like Running Start, which we have a number of, though it's not really optional, we have to offer certain things in there. So those would be different than probably a lot of the other courses. But I'd be very comfortable with our staff's ability collectively for us to make a decision on what we want to do just this year.
Does this require board, a board action?
It doesn't really, it doesn't require a board action. This is a building level decision. I think Rick would like some feedback from the board, is what I'm hearing from Rick. And since we do hear from the public, it's always good for us to kind of weigh in on things. But it wasn't on our agenda to discuss this tonight. So if people feel more comfortable bringing that up in May, I personally would be happy to weigh in right now and just say that, I think, given this environment and given the challenge of remote learning for students, I think an online final, first of all, I think there's a lot of learning that would have to do in order to really have an authentic online final. So I'm really not in favor of us doing online finals. I feel like our students are working and part of what they are learning through remote learning is a lot of stuff that's outside of the, what they comprehend from the topic. I mean, they're learning different types of time management and a whole bunch of other stuff. And I think there's some value to what they're going through in some way, but I don't see a final adding to that at this point. And I don't see the need for that kind of pressure on our students. That's my opinion.
Just thinking about it right now, I mean, I would agree with what Holly is saying. I think at this point, it would just be added pressure. And I don't know if it would serve its purpose for either the student or for the, for the teachers. And I just, I, that's off the cuff right now without having any other information.
Could I, can I offer the suggestion? I think what I heard, unless I heard incorrectly, is that the board was very comfortable kind of going back to teachers. And really, it is not really a board decision per se, because there are some teachers who don't give finals now. It all depends on the course. So what if Rick was to gather the information and give you an update via email of what his decision will be after talking with Gina, Bob, and I?
Anybody that works?
I have a point of clarif-
Go ahead, Liz.
I have a point of clarification. We're talking about going back to the teachers, though. Are we gonna end up with situations where we have a geometry and one teacher would give a final exam and the other teachers would not?
I don't, it has to be consistent, especially by subject. If we're talking about geometry and we're not doing a final and we're doing something that's, whatever we decide that we're doing, assess it, the mode of assessment we're using, then that's what we're doing. If it's, it's probably not gonna be an assessment. But however we're assessing students, whether it's your homework or just continuing what we're doing, then it's gonna be the same for everybody. It can't, it can't be I'm doing one thing and you're doing something else.
Okay, so was this a little unclear when you said, I'll just go back to the teachers? It almost sounded like, and then it was brought up that some teachers don't do it. I just want to make sure that whatever it is is consistent, either by subject matter or grade or whatever, so that we don't end up with some kids having different experiences. But I mean, I'm probably one of the board members who has been the most vocal about keeping final exams as part of our structure. And this is not a year where you would hear me utter anything in line with that. This is such a unique set of circumstances that this is a complete one-off. And to put final exams, I think, on these kids in some sort of a testing situation probably isn't gonna go like we would expect. And really would not necessarily be a good test of what they actually know. Because it's very difficult to give those kinds of exams in that, in that setting. I mean, you just heard the dog bark. I mean, that's what we, that's how we're learning. It's one thing to be able to refocus, but to have an exam under those sort of pressures is very different.
Thanks, Liz. Anything, anyone else?
I just wanna, I remind everyone that what Rick said also was, if it's Running Start, the requirements are beyond our control, so that might provide a different experience. But everything within our control would be the same across the board.
Understood.
Tom?
Yeah, I would just hope for the students' sake, as well as anyone else, that at the, at the end point, the students and the teachers understand whether or not the student has the ability to move on to the next level if it's a course that essentially acts as a prerequisite to the next step. Not as punishment, or I don't care about the grading, but to identify if there are students that may need to get additional help, either through the summer or through a V-Lax or something of that nature, so that they can continue on the path they choose.
Valid point. Anyone else? So Rick, I think we've given you some feedback. We don't vote on this, but, you know, I think Andy's point, if you could update us via email, on that would be helpful, and we can maybe have it on the agenda as just a public information, you know, a little bit of an update for the May meeting. That would be great.
Great, thank you.
Just out of curi-, just out of curiosity, what was the, how did AP decide to end their, their school year? I mean, how did the AP group decide to make that assessment?
Are you talking about the college board and how they did?
Yeah.
So, well, they decided to do take-home exams. And most of them are written, and I think my understandings are about forty-five minutes in length. And they are open book and open note, although they should, they have mechanisms to, you know, counteract cheating is what they say, but they are doing a exam that will be drastically different than the traditional long exam that kids have done before. And on that note, even though the exam will be, I guess, shorter, where teachers have been instructed to start dialing back expectations and workload in those courses at the beginning of May, because students, so they have time to prepare for those exams. Because we have made it really a family decision as to whether kids want to take them. And so we're finding a lot of kids do want to take them, so we're trying to support them in that.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, I need a motion. Tommy, you good? I need a motion to set the last day of the school year, the twenty nineteen twenty school year, as June twelfth. Is that the official, that's the day, right, Andy? June twelfth. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Krista, seconded by Beth. I see Beth.
Are we doing, gonna do a separate motion for the last day for teachers? Or are you trying to roll it all into one?
The motion I have in front of me just has the last day for students. Do we need to put the teachers, do we need a second motion for the teachers?
No, because the teacher- The teachers are covered by the CBA, so it's three days after the last day for students.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that motion's on the table. I need a roll call vote, starting with Krista.
Krista, yes.
Uh, Beth?
Beth, yes.
Cindy?
Cindy, aye.
Kate?
Kate, aye.
Liz?
Liz, aye.
Tom?
Tom, aye.
And Holly, aye. So that carries seven to zero. Okay, and finally, last item on our agenda tonight is to see what action the board will take regarding school breakfast prices for the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one school year. I need a motion to increase the price of school breakfast at the Hollis Brookline Middle School and the Hollis Brookline High School to one dollar and seventy-five cents effective August first, twenty twenty. Moved by Tom, seconded by Beth. Is there any discussion on this or comments, questions? Okay, so roll call, starting with Krista.
Krista, aye.
Beth?
Beth, aye.
Cindy?
Cindy, aye.
Kate?
Kate, aye.
Liz?
Liz, aye.
Tom?
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye. So that passes unanimously as well, seven to zero. And the final motion of the evening is I need a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
So moved by Beth, seconded by Krista. Roll call, Krista.
Krista, aye.
Beth?
Beth, aye.
Cindy?
Cindy, aye.
Kate?
Kate, aye.
Liz?
Liz, aye.
Tom?
Tom, aye.
And Holly, aye. So we are out at, I can't tell the time because my watch just died.
And goodnight, Dawn.
Goodnight, Dawn.
Goodnight, Dawn.
Goodnight, Dawn.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you all for your patience. Great night. Take care. See ya.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Bye now.
Bye, guys. Thanks.